Good evening, Byram Hills, and welcome to the Board of Education meeting for June 8th, 2021. I ask that you all rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. For the record, Scott Levy and Larissa Stengel are unable to join us this evening. The board met in executive session starting at about 7:01 to discuss a legal matter involving a claims auditor, a personnel matter involving a district employee, a personnel matter involving probationary teachers, contract matter involving individual employee, a contractual matter involving employees and nonrepresented employees, internal Board of Education matters and Board of Education officer matters. Okay, and that executive session wound up at about 7:33. At this point, may I have a motion, please, to adopt tonight's agenda?
Same move.
Second, all in favor? May I have a motion, please, to adopt tonight's consent agendas for Personnel, Special Services, and Business, which have certain important ramifications, which we'll talk about in a minute or two? May I have that motion, please?
Same move.
Second, all in favor, please? Okay, thank you. With that said, let me turn it over to the superintendent, so we can talk about two special reports, and then we'll go on to other matters.
Okay, Ira, thank you very much. So I'm not sure if anyone sees this enormous trophy behind me, but the first thing I would like to talk about today is our mock trial team. John Diavanzo, Lily Dittelsweig, Chloe Weisman, Elena Pychek, Jordan Bernard, Mia Dietrich, Drew Siskin, Isabella Stillman, Jacob Fenster, Jonathan Manowitz, Max Titlebaum, Zach Perrow, and Elliot Schuman, who is our lawyer coach, and Martin Gilbert, our mock trial coach. We had a very exciting event happen. The mock trial team once again took home the championship trophy in 2021. And I have to say, when lightning was occurring outside of my window before, and I saw this enormous statue next to me, I started to worry. This is probably one of the biggest statues I have ever seen and well-deserved. In any other year, this would be an incredible accomplishment. But given the fact that every meeting and practice trials were conducted virtually, it is incredibly notable that this team stayed on task from November through May. From Martin Gilbert, he says the Byram Hills Mock Trial Team has become a little like the New York Yankees from the 1950s. We're accustomed to winning championships. It's the third time in six years the team came in first place in the county competition. "The success of the team is a reminder," Martin Gilbert says, "of an African proverb related to raising a child. It takes a great school district to produce a great mock trial team year after year." Martin, that's wonderful. "The support of the administration, parents," I know how much parents have had to participate in that, "and the hard work of teachers and staff are all connected to the team's winning ways. Although everyone can take pride in the success, the work of two people is really notable. One, Lisa Pellegrino, the Byram Hills Math Chairperson, who catapulted the team to a new level when she came on board. The work, commitment, and advice of the team's lawyer coach, Elliot Schuman, has also been critical over the years, and you have been a great partner to Martin Gilbert. Elliot generously donates his time and expertise and gets the team over the top year after year. This year's team was powered to a championship by veteran experience and talent. The core of the team consists of seven seniors, most of whom were important in the team's success two years ago as well. John Diavanzo and Mia Dietrich deserve recognition for being the team's lead lawyers and modeling how it's done to lawyers who competed for the first time. Witnesses are always critical to a team's success as well. The team had by far the most experienced core of witnesses in the county and perhaps all of New York State. Chloe Weisman, Jordan Bernard, Elena Pychek, Lily Dittelsweig, Drew Siskin have combined 18 years of experience. The seniors on the team each demonstrated the ability to think on their feet in a critical situation. It's worth pausing for a few seconds to recognize the dedication of these talented seniors. The team has a good future, thanks to the students who had the opportunity to compete for the first time. 10th graders Max Titlebaum and Isabella Stillman and 9th Jonathan Manowitz and Zach Perrow had the opportunity to compete as lawyers this year. 9th grader Jake Fenster was a witness this year and played an important role in the team's championship match. So here's a quick review of mock trial season from Martin Gilbert. Like the 2019 team, 2021 had a challenging path to the finals. A loss in one of the preliminary rounds to Horace Greeley dropped Byram to the sixth seed, moving into a single elimination round. In the quarterfinals, the team defeated Blindbrook, our longtime rival for the third year in a row. Blindbrook was the number three seed. In the semis, the team faced off against the Lefal School, the number two seed, and picked up a decisive victory. Then the team squeaked by Scarsdale, the number one seed in the county finals by just one point. The board probably remembers me announcing this before. And like what was said two years ago in Martin Gilbert's words, "A win is a win, even if it is by one point." So from me, congratulations go to all the team members and to their coach, Martin Gilbert. And I know that the Board of Education will be sending this certificate of excellence to all of our mock trial students, and we will be proudly displaying this trophy in our high school. You did us very proud.
They really did. Isn't that trophy like the Stanley Cup where the members can take it to their home and show it off to their friends?
I think, I think so. I think everyone should get a month with this trophy in their house.
Yeah, congratulations to the mock trial team and really to Attorney Schuman, who really donated such amount of time and has done so well. I'm wondering, when we get back to in-person, if we couldn't get him here to really get some recognition from the board. I think he really has earned it. I think he's really earned it as a volunteer for all the time he's put in. Win or lose, he's really done a great job along with Coach Gilbert.
Yeah. And to Martin Gilbert, I've never seen anyone more passionate about what they're doing than Martin with mock trial. I mean, he lives, eats, and breathes it, and he just enjoys it, and he enjoys watching these kids grow in these positions.
He really does, and just such congratulations to him. And for those people who really want to consider making law their career, I'm happy to consult at any time, telling you why it's a good or not so good idea. But in all seriousness, it's a marvelous accomplishment. Congratulations to the team, to the faculty advisor, to Attorney Schuman. Well done, and we never take it for granted. We're not jaded, do it again next year, but it's a fabulous accomplishment.
Yes.
Okay, that's great. Jen?
All right, our next is recognition of tenure candidates. We have eight tenure recipients tonight. I want to talk first a little bit about what tenure is. You know, when we're making all of these sporting analogies and the Yankees, you know, tenure's not hitting a homerun, tenure is not sliding into home base, it's not crossing a finish line, it's not the culmination of a goal. Tonight, I'm going to talk about some faculty and some administrators who've accepted a lifetime commitment in Byram Hills, and that is what tenure means here. It's a lifetime commitment to the work that you're doing, to go back and forth from the precipice to see, how can I reflect, refine, and revise? And that is what the culture of Byram Hills is about, and that's where we applaud those who reach tenure. Our tenure candidates tonight, as Gina and Tim have shown the board in the past, have gone through a very rigorous few years of observations and new teacher orientations and mentors and curriculum development and pedagogical practices, everything that you can imagine to get them to this point. And what happens to us is the teachers, from the teacher perspective, they come to a point where they are not only learning and growing, but they are giving back. And each one of the tenure recipients tonight give back to their teams, to their grade levels, to their departments in very significant ways, making them a contributing factor. So Ira, you probably remember years ago, my predecessor used to say that getting tenure is like becoming a partner in a firm, right? And that you, in that partnership, are supposed to be contributing as much in bringing together this organization. We've seen what has happened during this past year in this pandemic. And if there was ever a time that you needed to see people bringing forward their work for the benefit of others and children, it was right now. And I have no hesitation in the recommendation to the board of all of these recipients for tenure. We also have two administrators tonight who have both been tenured before. They helped to steer the middle school through leadership transition when Dr. Evan Powderly retired, then through schedule changes, program development, all for the betterment of students. Our two administrative recipients who are here tonight know every single child in Crittenham by name and know things about them. And that is what helps to establish our community and keep us strong. We can do all of the work we want with challenge success, and Kim Lappel has done a lot of that work over the past couple of years, but it is something inside of you that is inside of him and inside of Angelo to care deeply about each individual student and to want to hear their voice in Crittenham. So I'm proud to introduce each of them tonight. Typically, they're here with their families, so I get to see some grandparents and parents and spouses and children, and it's always a very exciting time. And I hope, I know some of them already, because, you know, even Nicole Livedini, who's the first person I'm going to be speaking about tonight. Nicole was with her family when she was appointed. So, you know, we start to grow as a community here. The first person I want to talk about tonight, though, is Nicole Livedini. Nicole Livedini is a special education teacher at Wampus. And after teaching in the New York City Department of Education, she came here. We learned a lot about teachers have incredible professional development through the Department of Education in New York, and she brought to us so many different skills. She was actually described very early on in her career as an instructional leader at Wampus. Her supervisors see her consistently use data as she's informing how she's going to be teaching her students. She had prior experience using iReady, online reading and math programs, and she was instrumental in the adoption of the programs that we're using right now by the district for students at the elementary level. Nicole is a member of a data team, and she leads conversations during these data teams, and that has been motivating for her colleagues and supervisors. And during child study teams, when she's talking about special education students, she really speaks succinctly about their learning needs and how she can help them. For the past three years, she's been partnering with different general education teachers every year in the integrated co-taught model. Each one of her partnerships has been extremely successful, and through her student-focused, kind-yet-firm manner, she has positively influenced those around her. Nicole Livedini, I'm very proud of you, and congratulations on your tenure.
Is Nicole, can we see, is she here?
No, we don't, they're not in these meetings right now.
Jen, did you want me to present this?
Yes, please do, yep. I didn't want to say it, Gina, but I was wondering where it was.
Hang on one second. Just let me know if you can see it.
Yes, we can.
Okay, and so I'll follow your order, but here is Nicole.
Yay, Nicole, congratulations, Nicole.
Congratulations, Nicole.
All right, I think we should have a little like Board of Education and tenure recipient coffee, once we can all be together.
I think that's a marvelous idea.
That would be a great idea. I'll have a superintendent's coffee.
Yeah.
The next one is Meredith Briant. Meredith Strengs, she is a special education teacher at HC Crittenham Middle School. Meredith collaborates with her co-teachers. She's there holding her daughter right now. We have like a partial picture of her. She's an advocate for all of her students, and she really wants to increase engagement for her students through differentiated instruction. She's worked with Tim and with her colleagues quite a bit on differentiated instruction. She wants to foster new friendships for her students and put them into situations where they struggle socially. She explores extracurricular activities with them so that they can be surrounded by people with similar interests. I love that facet of a teacher when it's not just about teaching the content, it's about making sure that the child is assimilated in the school, and that's exactly what Meredith does. Kim described her as a leader exemplified by her well-balanced and positive approach to challenges. She co-taught with veteran teachers, and through her patient approach, colleagues have really been able to navigate some of the technological challenges that came to us with COVID. She embraces Byram Hills values. Meredith has extended her contributions to Byram Community by coaching additional students outside the class as a field hockey coach. She's also the assistant varsity basketball coach, and we know there, her collaboration with the head coach and her investment in those girls and in that basketball program resulted in increased participation and athletic success. I'm not sure if everybody remembers, but we had very small girl basketball numbers at one point, and Meredith and her partner were instrumental in really revitalizing that program and showing the girls what they were capable of. So Meredith, congratulations to you. We are so happy you are here with us. All right, the next one, also at Crittenham, Tara Ryan. This is the other half of the girls' basketball coaching. Nope, nope, and nope.
There you go. Hang on one second. You're in school order and we're in alphabetical order.
They're in.
There you go.
There you go, physical education and health. This is Tara Ryan. She's a strong and passionate athlete who's gained the respect and trust of her students and parents. She, as I told you, is the basketball coach. She is also the softball coach and the swim coach, really helping to round out the day of our children. Tara makes connections to kids by getting to know their interests. She meets students by adapting and modifying her approaches. She modifies education for physical education for those who need it. She's really good at taking a child who fears a specific physical education activity and lacks incompetence for it and making them feel comfortable with it. This has been really effective with her, with her adaptive PE classes for special education students as well. Tara seeks feedback. She makes adjustments to her instructions. So for example, she incorporated social-emotional learning in her lessons. It was recommended when Kim went into her class to observe. Now Tara is the leader for incorporating mindfulness and yoga into her curriculum. She's dedicated to her craft as a teacher and is always willing to collaborate. And recently, she designed interdisciplinary units with both her English Language Arts and Math colleagues. Tara, it's great to have you here. Congratulations. All right, Gina?
Yeah.
And next, we move to the high school, Lauren Conjulosi. Lauren is a special education teacher in Byram Hills High School. She's laser-focused on ensuring that her content and delivery will result in student outcomes. Lauren does something very old-school. She scripts all of her lessons. She figures out where her students are when they're leaving her in one class and caters that lesson for the next class by scripting what specific skills she needs to work out with each individual student. She really models the relationships with her students and her colleagues. She's been able to connect with students who have significant issues of trust at the high school, and they lack the confidence and abilities to succeed. She's quiet, but she has consistent encouragement of her students and support from them. And she's been, what Chris Walsh terms, that one who is the one trusted adult for the kids in her groups. Her willingness to partner with her general education teachers in the co-teach suggests her willingness to take risks, reflect on her motivation to continuously improve her craft. She learns from her supervisors, her content area department chairpersons, and she welcomes feedback. I love the fact that over the past three years, she's become a big part of the community outside of the classroom as well. As an assistant advisor for Social Advocacy Club, Lauren works alongside her students in facilitating community service opportunities and charitable events. She was also asked to serve as the Special Education Representative on Challenge Success Steering Committee, where she shares her study and observations of varying social and emotional needs of special education students at Byram Hills High School. She's a treasure. Thank you so much, Lauren. Congratulations. And Dr. Caroline Matthew. Dr. Matthew was a great find for our science research program. Her strong content knowledge in the sciences, I mean, keep in mind she did receive her PhD in microbiology, makes her a valuable resource to colleagues and the students in this science research program. Furthermore, she collaborates with Stephanie Greenwald to update structures in order to support students. What I love is that Caroline came from the outside, and what Tim Calton-Ecker likes to say is sometimes when we have someone from the outside coming into our organization, into one of our programs, they can serve as a mirror to us for the way that we are. And Caroline has brought so much to the program with resources and a website to help students during school closure in the spring. She contributed to the design of the Virtual Science Research Symposium, which was Out of This World, to celebrate students' work, to celebrate the senior class of 2020. She organized a parade to visit each senior's house to honor their achievements. Caroline was an excellent person to have a good rapport with students and is really respected by them. She is content-centered. She's grown considerably in pedagogical skills. She will take feedback. She knows that this summer was providing challenges due to the pandemic. Remember that these science research students were seeking new mentors. They were proceeding with research studies. She maintains connections with all of her students over the summer, checked in with them, and held grade-level meetings throughout the summer to be certain students received support in achieving their summer goals. She consistently demonstrates care for her students and goes beyond to assist her students. She is fantastic. Dr. Caroline Matthew, congratulations on your tenure. Well deserved. And last but not least, for our teachers, we have Greg Corillo. Greg is an incredibly strong collaborator. I felt, just talking personally, as if Greg were part of the fabric of Byram Hills from the second that he arrived here. Most recently, he really was starting to think that students and families needed new ways to learn about the college application process during this hybrid model with potential at any time from the beginning of the year that schools might close. So after reviewing ideas with Christina Wilson, Greg created video tutorials and a webpage for the College Clinic, just anticipating what the students are going to need before they needed it. He's also a learner, and he'll extend himself outside of his knowledge base. For example, if he's unfamiliar with the topic, he takes time to study it, learn it, and find resources. For example, his caseload included LGBTQ students, and not having had that experience in the past, he reached out to Center Lane, took workshops offered by BOSI's, and made contacts with experts in the field. Given this expert knowledge, he updates the department regularly and consults with counselors when they need it. This type of action, to me, demonstrates incredible leadership potential. He's become a knowledgeable and caring counselor. He contributes to the overall strength of the department and each student. He shows versatility also in his counseling skills. He started as a ninth-grade counselor and easily transitioned to a 10th grade through 12th grade counselor. He volunteered to be the department's liaison to challenge success and a learning communities facilitator to turnkey learning to his colleagues. Greg Corillo, congratulations on your tenure. We're so happy you're here. And now for our two administrators who have been here before. I'm going to start with Angelo Ancona. Angelo Ancona and I, when we were little kids, when we were little kids, we worked together in the middle school under Dr. H. Evan Powderly. And Angelo and I created the block schedule that occurs at Crittenham to this day. Dr. Powderly was instrumental in taking us from our teaching positions and moving us into administrative positions by coaching us throughout his career. Angelo Ancona and I, back 20 years ago, would go to different schools to teach them about how to do scheduling in a middle school schedule. Angelo worked as a science teacher for forever at the middle school and was revered and took on the responsibilities of the assistant principal a few years ago. Like him, he has an incredible passion for the kids. He's focused a lot on emotional wellness, strength of the HCC teacher community, and also coordinating some outside activities and pilot programs. For emotional wellness, Angelo expanded community capacity through resources and education. He implemented Project Me, which was a student-focused, year-long project to build and foster community with personal growth. He continued to utilize challenge-success resources and expertise. He resurveyed students to track progress over three years and looked for areas of need to support students using our challenge-success results at the middle school. He continues to refine and reflect on wellness goals. Remember, some of that work that came out of that was each team had a wellness goal that they would work on for their students every year. He worked with each team to revise their theories of action. And he fosters the HCC teacher community as well, utilizing superintendent conference days to work with the teachers and get administrative feedback and student voice circles, so that we have a shared student experience. Angelo Ancona, it has been a long time since we've been teachers together in classrooms. You have come quite a long way, and it is so well-deserved. I know that every single child at Crittenham is in incredibly good hands with you there, and your support of Kim is instrumental in the success of that building. So thank you, Angelo, and congratulations to you.
I just want to say for Angelo that it should be remembered that Angelo was the head of the BHTA for a number of years, and he served that position with great distinction. He was a terrific partner with the district and with the board. And Angelo, on behalf of the board, we congratulate you. We're proud of you on this very, very well-deserved accomplishment. Well done.
Congratulations. And last but not least, Kim Lappel, the principal of HC Crittenham Middle School. Kim Lappel had no idea that she would spend the last 16 months talking to me every single day, every weekend, every night. And I have to say that it was with great confidence that she took on the responsibilities of helping to guide a middle school through a global pandemic. Kim does it with calm. Kim does it by listening to everybody's voice. And Kim does it through her expertise in being able to collaborate with others around her. We don't value leadership in this district when the leader likes to work in isolation. We value leadership where leaders seek to understand how other people are thinking, to get feedback on their ideas, and to move forward together as a group. And that is Kim. Kim is, she's like an incredible coach, a coach to the teachers and a coach to all the administrators as well. So for Kim, I think she's really done so much with morale, culture, and climate. When you're setting the tone for your building, for the expectations, for how we're going to be with each other, how we're going to be with children, and what our aspirations are as far as academics are concerned, that's when you have a well-rounded principal. So morale, culture, and climate at HCC have been so positively influenced by your leadership, Kim. She reviewed and refined a multi-tiered system of support to help students who are struggling. She supported teacher teams to participate in BOSI's workshops to alter their approach toward interdisciplinary and problem-based units and lessons. She conducted follow-up meetings and turnkey ideas and activities in faculty meetings to support the development of interdisciplinary opportunities, wellness for all, which is something we will all remember, Kim, for, and redesigning the end-of-year practices for students. She provides opportunities for teacher voice on Super Team, something that was created by Kim. She gives difficult feedback when necessary. She involves chairs and directors in the decision-making. And I just have to say that she gives the best principals' coffee. They are informative. Parents are really interested. She has parents during the pre-COVID times who would show up in droves for her principals' coffees. They pull the parent community together for every initiative that's happening there. Most of all, Kim is a strong and caring leader, especially during crisis. She showed strength and leadership when sharing distressing news more than one time at HCC. And Kim was careful and focused in her communication with the community regarding those events and prepared faculty and staff with how to support students and each other. And you just cannot put a price tag on that. Kim, you so successfully guided so many people through crisis and to reach great heights academically and socially and emotionally. So congratulations to my friend and colleague, Kim Lappel, on your tenure. I know that Kim is watching this tonight with her parents and partner and son Brady, so I hope that they are. So I hope that they are all cheering you on right now.
I just want to say that of all the many, many people I've met in my travels through the Byram Hills District, Kim is truly one of the special ones. I feel like I've tracked your career from beginning to today. And it was a, not an easy thing to take over the middle school, to replace Evan Powderly. And to replace a legend almost. And I think Kim has succeeded so well. And she is held in such high esteem by the district that we just couldn't be happy for you, Kim. I hope, you know, if you are watching this, Brady, you should be very proud of your mom because she's very, very dear and special to us and we don't know what we'd do without her. So, Kim Lappel, congratulations on your tenure. It is more than well deserved. You are truly a key player in the Byram Hills culture and in our family. So we're very, very proud of you.
Can I jump in too? I have my second one going through HCC now with Kim. And I have to say, both Kim and Angelo are just wonderful. They've created such a positive, warm environment during a time that has been very difficult for people, for kids to make connections with other kids and with their teachers. And you guys have done a fantastic job. And Jen, when you said they know every student, they really do know every student. They are out there every morning at drop-off, they say hi by name, they know every kid. And you can call them and, you know, ask them a question about your kid and they know the answer. They know who your kid is. It's not just that they know a name. They actually know who your kids are and they're wonderful and they're such a great team together. We're very lucky to have them.
All right. Congratulations to all of our tenure recipients tonight. We are so fortunate that you have chosen Byram Hills as a place where you're going to continue your careers. Thank you so much.
Okay, that is fantastic. I truly wish they were all in the room with us where we could celebrate them further and celebrate their families, as Jen said. But we will, we will make it up to them. We're truly thrilled. At this point in the proceedings, we're going to delay our consideration of unfinished business just to take on the issue of masking, which I know has become an issue that has resulted in some communication between the community and the board. So let me turn it over to the superintendent so she can share with the community and the board their thoughts on the matter. Then we'll take any comments and discussion from the board. And if there's any comments in the community, we'll hear from them at this point. Jen?
Great. And first, I want to thank everyone who did reach out to me to express there are so many opinions about masks, masking, unmasking, need for it, no need for it. And just, I do respect every family's thought process involved in what you think is best for your family and your children. And I also appreciate that you trusted us to send your children to school this year with all of the mitigation factors that we had in place. And for the patience that I'm seeing parents have right now with asking so politely if we can start to take a look at this. We have been waiting for New York State Department of Health. We know that on Friday, Howard Zucker's letter to the CDC sent every superintendent and many parents in districts and many board members in a flummox over what is going to be happening. And on Monday, are the masks going to just be lifted? And how are people going to manage that? What did wind up coming out from that was an order, an executive order that said that we do not have to have masks in school. The exact order says outside. The exact order says the school has the power to bring back the normalcy our children are craving at this point in outdoors. And that masks are not necessary under those conditions. But it is up to schools whether kids will be masked outdoors or not. Knowing that, I have been, I watched the press conference with the governor. I have looked to our guidance. I've consulted with Thomas Murray, who is our doctor at Yale New Haven Children's Hospital in charge of pediatric immunology. I've consulted with Richard Stumacher in charge of critical care at Northwell Health, Dr. Casaro, our school physician, Dr. Kontasessa in town, who's also on our stakeholder group. And all of them agree with my recommendation to the board that masks outside should not be required. Of course, somebody could wear a mask outside if they choose to. But as long as we are trying to make sure that kids are staying three feet of distance and are not huddled together for long periods of time outdoors, the science is just not saying, I mean, I think it's something like 99.5% of transmissions through some studies that I saw through Dr. Murray are actually happening indoors with only 0.5% of transmission happening outdoors. And some of those are in very special circumstances. Certainly not kids running around and playing on a playground. So my recommendation to the Board of Education is that we do not require masks outside on our campuses. And that will include any activities that we are hosting. An eighth grade moving up ceremony, a high school graduation, a prom, all of those times where I'm just not sure that there is a risk factor involved in that. And our children should now have the opportunity, with close to 70% of people vaccinated in Westchester County, to have those outdoor events. I open it up for the board if anybody has any questions or comments.
Okay. Anybody from the board want to be heard on this? Is there any? Anybody who wishes the superintendent to consider a different masking policy? It seems to be consistent with where we should be. But again, if any board members want to be heard on this, now is the opportunity. Otherwise, we'll open it up to any public comment.
I just want to say thank you, Jen. I'm in full support of the getting the kids back to normal, as normal as possible, and getting those masks off them outdoors. It's wonderful.
Thank you, Mia. And the public should know that the board right now, as we're having this conversation, is not voting on masks outside. I need, as we have been doing with COVID, to have board support behind us as we make these decisions as a community.
Yeah, this is not an action item for the board. This is a superintendent's purview with a recommendation. But again, I'm in full agreement with this. And I can state that Lara and Scott, who could not join us tonight, are also have been consulting and are also in full agreement with the superintendent's recommendation. Dr. Kaltenekar?
Yes, there may be someone who wants to speak. I need to type it into the chat. And we are on a five-second delay from our live stream. There was someone earlier. Let me see if they still want to speak.
Do any other board members in the meantime have any questions or concerns to raise about my recommendation?
Yeah, we've asked.
No? Okay, great.
Okay, I think I have someone I need to test out if this is going to work in terms of. Let's test them.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead. Can you identify yourself?
This is Gwen Torrey.
You can hear it?
Gwen Torrey.
Okay, Ms. Torrey, can you hear me?
She can't hear you, but I can communicate in the chat.
Okay, just tell her that she's identified herself.
I can, there's a delay of my own speech.
All right.
Trying to get her to speak.
Tim, okay, please tell her that she has three minutes to address the board if she'd like.
Okay.
Trying. Trying to get it.
All right, I heard myself three times. So I'm just going to speak and hopefully you won't hear me three times. Okay, I am an Armonk resident for 19 years and this is my first Board of Education meeting. I have trusted our board and still do. So please accept my things and know that my confidence is strong in the board. I sincerely want to thank Jen Lamia and all of her administrative staff who have gone above and beyond to keep our schools open. So I did write down my thoughts because I did not want to go over my time. Half of my thoughts from the previous weekend have already been addressed, so bear with me. The current topic of that untimely letter on Friday saying about the end of the school year and this has been an amazing school year despite all the difficulties. And I just want to say that I'm fully aware that, like Jen said, many families have different concerns, health concerns, and I'm really sensitive to that as I speak. And the main comment is I'm 100% in favor of giving our children two short weeks of choice, whether it's to wear the mask outdoors. On one hand, I thought it's only two weeks, let's just ride out the status quo. And on the other hand, it's only two weeks, so why not give the children the choice to mask or unmask? Knowing that, like Jen said, outdoor transmission is almost non-existent, especially with the current low numbers. Our kids need hope. So thank you, everyone. They don't need more mandates right now. And we trust our children, they're smart, respectful. And the political landscape should not dictate mental and physical health of our children, which I know we all put first. And kids are resilient. That's what I've heard this whole, you know, year and a half. But there's a depletion of that. So I'm so happy to hear that our kids could unmask their choice outdoors because it's our duty to replenish some of that hope in them. They look to us, right, for hope and knowledge. And for the first time in most of our lives, we haven't been able to confidently provide this consistently. I share with the board to hear the voice of the community that personally have experienced and have listened to many friends from all over who are dealing with devastating mental, emotional, and physical damage. Yes, damage, right, that has come from all this extreme fear and uncertainty. We need people, people need people, and we need to look out for each other. And it's not such a black and white answer, as we all know. I'd like to use my time to make a comment about future decisions regarding guidance for September, which we all know is going to possibly be more difficult and complicated due to vaccination and healthcare status, et cetera. I believe that all sides need to be respected and understand that extremism can only lead to segregation and hatred. Understand, I have a college student, high school student, and a student at Wampus. So I have really so many different perspectives due to their ages. And the science and opinions with regard to many aspects of this virus is ever-changing and influenced by way too many entities that are tearing apart families and communities at times. Our schools cannot match other institutions that give social rewards to families who choose to consent to this emergency use medical treatment. The same parents that we once worried about feeding our kids organic food and cutting grapes so they don't choke, we shouldn't have to rapidly choose to get a vaccine so our child could just fit in better at school or have sports opportunities that maybe they couldn't have without this. The inequity and segregation are honestly more frightening to me than contracting a virus with an extraordinary high recovery rate. We are at a crossroads in many ways and I pray that the values that we were brought up with rise to the forefront to protect us and our freedom. As a community, we now have a choice with the guidance from New York State that we claim to follow so closely, which you did. This was written a day and a half ago. So why not keep everything in place except for outdoors? So thank you. If a family has a health reason or fear that the kids' summer plans may be delayed, then of course, the mask option is still there. Let us be careful not to let the vigilance that we've had thus far lead to the pride of, let's just keep going because we've done so well, or fear motivating our current decisions. Let our kids rally with one another, not just take care of his or her neighbor. Be social beings that we're all meant to be in person and full of life. Let it be a pat on the back for these kids for all the things they've done this year and a small sign of hope that we're actually moving forward, sunshine, fresh air, and smiles. And an unwritten note, my son called me yesterday. I was on the golf course at my high school, who made it to high school sectional, I'm so proud of him. You're not supposed to be on the phone on the golf course. And my son from Wampus called, "Ma, guess what? We got to take our mask book at recess." So brought tears to my eyes and he was really happy. So thank you. And I hope the discourse continues and we can come to the community. Thank you.
Thank you very, very much for your words and thank you for your thoughts. It's very appreciated. And you may rest assured that the board will be ever vigilant in this matter and doing what we believe is in the best interest of the children. So thank you very, very much.
Gwen, that was so eloquent. Thank you so much for all of those words.
Yeah. Okay, Tim, anyone else in the queue?
There was just one comment. I don't know if he wants to speak publicly, asking if the decision will be made tonight. And if so, how will it be?
If they were watching, if he or she were watching, they would know.
And I will send a blast right after.
Yeah, that's fine.
Put that in the chat.
Okay, thank you very much. We're going to move now to item 11 on the agenda, review of policies as a second read.
Nope, go ahead. Stay here. Keep going.
Okay. May I have a motion, please, to adopt as a second read? Policy 1420, Regulation 1420R. Policy 9420, 9420.1. And as a first read, Policy 0100, 8131. And Mark for deletion, Policy 6231. Second? I need a second.
Okay.
Thank you. Any, Tim or Jen, do you want to make any overall comments regarding these policies at this point?
I think on the second reads, we answered some questions at the last board meeting and described those. They're pretty straightforward. I think those are straightforward on the first read ones. Just briefly, there's two policies. One is the Policy 0100, Non-Discrimination and Equal Opportunity. That was a policy that we revised in 2019. We're updating it again, just adding a reference to the Dignity for All Students Act, addressing that, and also the Policy on Student Bullying and Harassment Prevention and Intervention. NISBA recommended that we add that language into the policy and we, Policy Committee, thought that was a good idea. We will also be reviewing our bullying and harassment prevention and intervention policy this summer and bringing that to the Policy Committee next year. Gina, did you want to speak about the pandemic? Mention that briefly?
Sure. The pandemic policy, 8131, you may recall that we just adopted this policy last June. However, there were some recommendations from NISBA to include, obviously, the pandemic planning is ensuring that we are implementing infection prevention control should we encounter a contagious disease within our schools and that we're consulting with all our stakeholders, our medical professionals, our local Department of Health, and obviously, our State Department of Health and any other government guidance. But also, the recommendation was that we include protocols that are consistent with Section 27(c) of the Labor Law, which identifies essential workers. It identifies how we plan to have our employees work remotely, the technology that we have to offer to them, as well as, most importantly, in terms of how our students will learn and how they will access their education. Of course, a plan for contact tracing and any other requirements noted by the Department of Health. And this, you may recall, it sounds very familiar, that protocols, plan that we had to create, the governor had mandated that all employers, private and public, create a pandemic planning policy, protocols for these exact topics that I just mentioned. So we now have just inserted this into this policy. And also, this policy, the other revision is just allowing the board to temporarily suspend any policies to the extent to comply with any orders, executive orders, that are put in place during a pandemic.
Okay. Any board questions for either Tim, Gina, or Jen on these policies? The ones for a second read or the first read? Okay, all in favor, please? Thank you very much. May I have a motion, please, to adopt the Miller and Levine Biology textbook as a set forth in item twelve point one?
No move.
Second, please. Tim, any comments on this?
Yeah, just briefly, I'll explain that the current book, textbook that we're using in biology is over ten years old. And the main reason also for looking for a new one was that the online resources were no longer available. And that was being used a lot, particularly now during the pandemic. But in the future, with online resources being an important aspect of textbooks. Deb Kay, our science chairperson, put together a committee. They reviewed books and went with a classic book, Miller and Levine Biology. It's a classic biology textbook. It's really high quality, as you can see from their evaluation report in your packet. So I recommend this as well, is the committee. So.
Okay.
Thank you.
And will this be in service for the next school year?
Yes, it will be. Yep.
All right, we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor, please? Thank you. Oh, it's that time of year again. We talk about site-based teams. It must be warm weather. Tim, is this your bailiwick again?
It's Tim.
It is, yes, thank you. So let me just find this. Site-based team. So the, the site-based teams this year focus primarily on our return to school plan, particularly at the start of the year. And I want to, again, thank our principals and our teachers and administrators who've served on those district-wide committees, as well as the building-wide site-based. As we are reflecting back now on the year, it was tremendous feedback that, from our community, from our families, that helped us open our schools. And most of the site-based team was focused on that particular work. However, there were other things that they did as well. So particularly at the middle school and high school, both Ms. Lappel and Mr. Walsh used their site-based teams to focus on their schedules, their master schedules. They came to present to you recently on their schedule work. It was a lot of back and forth with community members and all stakeholders, faculty, staff members that were involved in those decisions about the schedule. So I want to thank everybody who was involved in that. So that was the extent of the site-based teams this year, our return to school plan and some work on the master schedules, keeping our work going forward. So tremendous process and a way we get all of our stakeholders involved in our work. So thanks to those teams for doing that. I think we lost our president. So where is he? I could keep talking about it. Want me to give more highlights? I could say at the elementary level, I'll go a little further. I know that our elementary folks had worked on a social emotional learning curriculum. And I want to thank Gina Cunningham as well for facilitating some of those discussions, particularly with David Mack at Wampus, looking at and reviewing social emotional learning curriculum and doing some evaluation. And we're going to pilot some social emotional learning curricula next year at our K five schools. So that concludes the site-based team report. Mr. Sholman.
Well, thank you very much, Tim. It's always a pleasure to know that we're coming to that point in the year. And again, as I noted before, I believe we are really one of the very few districts left in the state that have site-based teams. I don't even, I don't think there are many more, and I think it's always been worthwhile venture. And Tim, thank you for your leadership and stewardship in this.
Thank you.
Superintendent's report.
Jen, you're on mute.
Okay, thanks Gina. So first, I want to remind parents of the district plan for two thousand twenty one, twenty two. And we are going to have principals' coffees this summer to talk about any changes in each particular building. Pull that back down to each building level right now. We are planning for a hundred percent in-person in case anybody missed it. We do need to have a hybrid plan in the event anything should occur. Although for our K five students, it won't be hybrid. We're planning on the same thing we're having, well, similar to what we're having now with all students in school. And then a remote plan, that's going to be required. We have not received news from New York State yet regarding what our plans need to look like for the fall in the coming weeks or potentially months. We will learn more about mask wearing and any other requirements, whether we're having remote instruction or not. All of that will come to us from New York State. I did receive a parent inquiry asking if we could have remote instruction, even if the state says that the district does not have to have it. I informed that parent that we are a public school and we received funds from the state. We cannot determine that we're going to be carrying on our very own programs like that, like a remote instruction program. If the state is saying that we can't be, that we're not doing that. So look forward to some principals' coffees. I will be attending with you throughout the summer to help you get acclimated to your existing school with your child or your new school. And we have all kinds of events set up to have kindergarten and first grade parents come in to see the schools. I know that our current first grade, our current kindergarten parents did not have that option. So we want to give you that opportunity to come in and visit our schools sometime this summer. You'll be receiving all of that information from your principals. Now for all of the fun stuff coming up. So we had a virtual art show, which was absolutely outstanding. The Fine Arts Department K twelve opened virtual doors to the community and the world, actually. There were over twenty-five hundred virtual visitors locally and nationally. That's enormous. This was the first time all student artwork was showcased, K to twelve. Under the helm and the vision of Pete Pollack's and the technical aid website built by the Media Center, the K twelve teachers and parents prepared and submitted student artwork displayed on the site. An AP art show exhibit was also created and featured seventy Byram Hills High School AP artists from classes from AP photo, AP studio art, AP graphic design and AP three D design. It was absolutely fantastic, and you could still access that art show if you did not get the opportunity to do that yet. One would never think we were still in a pandemic when you see the rest of these things as well. Next, they held Fiddler on the Roof, and it was on the front of our school focus. It was another success for the Barley Players and the Fine Arts Department. It ran from May twentieth to May twenty-third with limited seating. It was really like no other. We went to see it, Tim, Gina and I. It involved temperature checks, social distancing, learning to sing and emote in masks, which is no easy task. John Lopez, who will be retiring at the end of this year, well-loved and who has been running that theater program, said, "The hardships we have had to face together actually forged us into a tighter ensemble. We became family, relying on one another, trusting and leaning on one another, and stretching our limits toward the common goal of sharing a story for the first time in over a year." And what a story it was. Congratulations to everybody who was involved in Fiddler on the Roof. They filmed the show. And they're going to be having some on June seventh, which was last night, they had their first one. And tenth, the Barley Players are holding some viewings for those, and seating was limited. But it was out of this world fantastic. I am part of the Lower Hudson Council of School Superintendents. And school superintendents and some of our vendors run a scholarship program every year that we personally contribute to. Superintendents from three different counties are involved, Westchester, Putnam and Rockland. And I'm not sure if it was Putnam or Rockland superintendents who read the Westchester scholarship recipients this year, but they selected Olivia Kanter as the scholarship winner for the category of engineering, architecture, math and science. So I'm always so proud when one of those scholarships goes to our own. Congratulations, Olivia. Saint Vincent's Hospital, we have, it's the Saint Vincent's Hospital Youth Award. And we've seen our, some of our other students receive an award like this too this year. This award honors local high school students who best exemplify that hospital's mission of charity, excellence in healthcare and lifelong volunteering. Congratulations to Lila. And next, twenty twenty one U.S. Presidential Scholars Competition Finals, Luke Brioti. Luke was one of six hundred twenty-five semifinalists to move to the final round. Can you imagine that? One of six hundred twenty-five. The U.S. Presidential Scholars Program was established in nineteen sixty-four by executive order of the president to recognize and honor some of our nation's most distinguished graduating high school seniors and their accomplishments in academic success, leadership and service to school and community. What an honor, Luke. Congratulations to you. All right. We have Catherine Pedala. Each year, the National Merit Scholarship Corporation recognizes and honors a select few academically talented students from across the United States. Students chosen for this award are high-achieving, motivated and contribute to their school and community. Congratulations to you, Catherine. And we have our Bobcat of the Season, Nicole Ramirez for swimming. And we also have had our Bobcat of the Season, Matt Wyler for football. So congratulations to both of them. We also had our Byram Hills Awards Assembly that was livestreamed on May twenty-sixth. Traditionally, there are two awards Byram Hills students and faculty and staff nominate for. The first is the twenty twenty-one PTSA Carullo Leadership Award, given to a senior based on leadership, character, dedication, loyalty, humanity and interest in education. And this year's award went to David Gold. The second award, the High Black Jack Wallenberg Memorial Award, is the final award of the evening. It's considered the highest honor for a graduating senior. It goes to the student who has a humanitarian outlook, a willingness to extend themselves for others, an optimistic approach to life and its challenges. The winner of this year's award is Olivia Pika. Olivia delivered an incredible heartfelt speech to close the award ceremony. It was amazing. We still have that ceremony up if anybody has an opportunity to go see it. Congratulations to all of our students who were recognized with awards. We have our Authentic Science Research Symposium on Wednesday. It was phenomenal. This virtual event celebrated the future generations of scientists and promoted scientific literacy. We had over a hundred and fifty community members in the livestreamed event. Congratulations to the one hundred and one science research students and to what we like to call the Fab Five. They are the students who put the event together. Lucy Quitkin, Quittican, Nora Lowe, Sidney Levy, Ariana Tobakin and Julie Lucchino. So congratulations to the Fab Five. And woo, I mean, would you imagine that we had COVID right now with all of these events that you're seeing? So we have our Senior Athletic Recognition, Building Character, right? So Monday, June seventh, that ceremony occurred. It was livestreamed. You can still watch it. The Byram Blitz hosted the evening, which was awesome. And four student athletes also spoke about their dedication and growth through Byram Athletics. A senior recognition book was sent home to all of them with quotes from each senior athlete, along with the fourteen big awards. We had the Already Award of the Year given to Madison Jakubak and Mateo Sinan. We had the Best Comeback Athlete of the Year, Alexia Giordano and Michael Ascanio. We had the Courage Award of the Year, Alexa Gindal and Ben Weinhoff. Whoop, forgive me. We have the Leadership Award of the Year, Lily Seisler and Hayden Thruling. Yay for you guys. Lynn Rosenthal Memorial Scholar-Athlete Award. And William McCoy Junior Memorial Scholar-Athlete Award, Tessa Schwartz and Luke Brioti. Sportsmanship Award of the Year, Olivia Pika and David Gold, really well-deserved. And Athlete of the Year, Jen Moy and Matt Wyler. Wow, what a night. Congratulations and special thanks to Rob Pliswagna, Brian Melso from the Media and Communications Center, and to Brett Alcantara and all of the coaches who helped to bring these kids to this point during such a critical time. Awesome job from everyone. And that is the superintendent's report.
Well, that's a great report. Thank you so much, Jen. Tim?
Yes, I do want to give a brief report about Global Scholars. We are finishing our fourth year of implementation of Global Scholars and plus two additional years preparing for it and writing the curriculum. And I want to thank Melissa Stahl, Duane Smith, Jen Layton, who was their brainchild and their hard work to design and write the curriculum after studying for a year. And also bringing in teachers Lisa Squadron and Goose, Kelsey Smith and Michael Young, who are also now teaching program as well. We tried something new this year with our seniors. So students who, remember, it's a three-year program in global competence. And they put together something called the Senior Defense. So after three years of the program, the students had to create a video that showed their learning over the course of the three years. And then they created a short video, sent it out to people, other students in the other classes. Any adults could come, and they had to present this video and defend their learning throughout the year. We could join it and ask questions and engage in dialogue with the students about their learning. It was our first time through it and was really remarkable. And I want to show two short clips from two different students. And I will say there is other resources on our Global Scholars website, from the district website, that you could look at. And I included a few more examples in your packet as well that you could watch. You could watch these students present and talk about their learning throughout the year, and it is really remarkable. So I'll present just a couple of minutes to different students to show some different ways that brought some learning to it. Let me present my screen. And that going, and then I'll. Get this. And the first student is Lindsay Noel from Her Defense. And I will show the beginning of her presentation when she talks about, she sort of sets up a program and gives you a nice sort of summary of her learning at the beginning of it. And then starts to talk about her first project. Again, show about a minute and a half of this. And Jen, if you can let me know if you can hear this okay, it's not echoing. It's starting to play. This goes, this doesn't go. I'm going to try to go over to our other student. Let me try over to Nick Varsamas. Nick sort of reflects on his leadership piece. Let's see if this one plays. If not, my computer's running slowly, so I might do this at another time. Unfortunately, I can't get this going right now. So I'll try one more thing. I'll see if I can reload for you. Sorry. I apologize. Try this again.
Hi, everyone. I'm Lindsay Noel. I'm a third-year Global Scholar student, and welcome to my path towards taking action throughout my years in Global Scholars. I'm going to start by talking about how these three projects have surrounded my experience in Global Scholars over the course of the past two years. The projects being the Census Project, which aims to increase census participation in hard-to-count areas. The Child Marriage Project, for sought to outlaw child marriage for underage girls in America. And the Adverse Childhood Experiences Project, which aims to educate students and teachers about what an ACE is. Throughout all three years, these four mindsets and dispositions were constantly looked back on and what guided and focused all of our work. They were investigating the world, recognizing perspectives, taking action and communicating our ideas. They served as a great reminder of the skills we work to develop and practice. I want to talk a little bit about design thinking and its importance and value in the Global Scholars Program. Design thinking is the process that guides our research and ultimately leads for it to get put into action. It shifts the way we view problem-solving from every step. Choosing an issue, empathizing, defining it, testing, brainstorming, prototyping and next steps. Gives us the flexibility to build off our own topics that we connect with and that we're passionate about. The process is so important because I applied it to all three of the projects I'm reviewing today. The most meaningful being the Census Project. During the second year, our first action plan was surrounding the U.S. Census of two thousand twenty. We were challenged to mobilize residents to complete the two thousand twenty census. Over the course of months, we interviewed stakeholders, researched evidence, identified a problem area and designed an action plan that addressed the problem.
So I'll pause that one, and I just want to comment on the fact that you could see how she's approaching design thinking. Design thinking has become really integral to the Global Scholars Program. We introduced design thinking initially through our STEAM, our Science Technology Engineering Arts and Math Curriculum. And that now has come into solving any type of problem, solving world issues as well. And is really something that's central to the students' learning, so they know how to approach problem-solving using sort of an iterative design process. And you can hear students talk so simply and easily about it because it is central to the three years of their experience. But I thought Lindsay did a great job of setting up what the program is and identified the three. identified the three projects that she dove deep into that were her passion projects throughout the three years. I will go over to a second student, if I can get his going. Nick Varsamas, I want to show one aspect of Global Scholars is teaching students about leadership and how to be leaders. So I'm going to go to the portion in his reflection of his defense to talk about him reflecting on his own leadership. And so in addition to teaching students a framework for approaching global issues, which Lindsay described, Nick talks about sort of the personal growth that he also experienced through this.
Hi, everyone. I would first like to
Let me go to, into this a little bit. Let me start here.
Predominantly over the first semester and a little bit into the beginning of the second semester. And as you can see, the five practices and ten commitments, model the way, inspire a shared vision, challenge the process, enable others to act and encourage the heart. These were the main five practices that we focused on through looking at different mediums and different realms, all trying to focus on how have these impacted us in the past and how are we going to use them to better ourselves as a leader in the future? And my big quote that I talk to Ms. Stahl about all the time is, "If you're not in the arena getting your ass ticked on occasion, I am not interested and in or open to your feedback." And Brene Brown has to be my favorite inspirational speaker because the concept of vulnerability was something that really resonated with me this year and allowed me to reflect on a lot of the things that I've been focusing on in the past. I have always been scared of vulnerability to show that I, you know, am weak. And as a leader, being vulnerable is one of the most important things that you have to do. If you're not vulnerable and you're not showing that you do have those weak moments, the people you're trying to lead, then it's not really going to set a great example. It's all about modeling the way, as seen in those five practices and ten commitments. You know, these really, you know, were the cornerstones of what I was thinking about this entire year and allowed me to reflect on my past experience with the Census Project and really helped me understand, was I really inspiring a shared vision for that project? Was I really trying to enable others to act and encouraging them to get the best product? And there were moments when I could have encouraged more and I could have enabled, you know, I could have really strengthened and fostered collaboration rather than just, you know, demanding of things that needed to be done. This experience in leadership really just allowed me to go into deep self-reflection mode, especially this past year of not just, you know, who I want myself to be in the future and also what the, an example I'm trying to set for others, you know, this is, it's, leadership is big and it's always going to be prevalent in my life. And I think that with having this experience, it really allowed me to go into a deep reflection of who I am and who I want to be.
So I wanted to share his reflection, which showed a different bit, a little bit of a different angle. It is an explicit goal of ours to teach students how to be leaders. And he was really reflecting on his role as a leader and what he learned through this course, through experience of taking leadership action. And I thought that was very insightful in his reflection. So I want to thank again our teachers and the administrators for designing this course. We continue to revise and refine it. And particularly now working on that senior experience. I want to thank the board for your support.
You know, Tim, it's so exciting for me to see how far this program has come. I remember when it started and it just, it's evolved in such wonderful ways. And just to see the presentations you're giving tonight is just, uh, it's great. Congratulations, really. It's just a wonderful program. I wish I had it when I was in high school.
Yeah. It was, it was hard to imagine what the outcome might be in some respects because it was a little softer per se with respect to the way that the program was developed. Like, I just, it was hard for me to envision how it would outcome, but those two, you know, young high schoolers that just articulated their paths so well. I mean, tremendous success. If that's any indication of, you know, how it's working, it's just terrific. So thank you.
Thanks. Yep. They, you can watch these videos and really dive deep into what they're learning, both content and again, what they're learning about themselves as learners and about process. You know, to hear a student talk about, you know, a design challenge, how they are, you know, this process they go through. It's really incredible. And our Global Scholars are part of, they're being involved working with Mr. Walsh to design the design challenge that's going to happen during Regents Week with the kids. And the Global Scholars students in the second year are going to be running that with the ninth, tenth and eleventh graders during Regents Week. So this is going to be a big event that they're putting together, working with Mr. Walsh to get the entire grade level during Regents Week to come together and solve a problem. And it'll be interesting to see how that works out. And I'm confident they'll be able to go through that process, but it's going to be a good learning experience for them.
It's wonderful. Thank you so much. It's special. Okay, Kelly, anything? Kelly, I'm mute.
All right. Sorry about that.
No problem.
Just wanted to go over this with the board. If you remember, if you rewind back a year and some change, when we talked about the budget for this year, we talked about taking a look at the high school entrance and doing something to alleviate some of the issues that we have in the pickup process for our students. We did budget that as part of this year's budget, but when we talked about that budget process, we said we'd hold off, see how the year went and reevaluate that towards the end of the year. You know, as we are at the end of the year, so I wanted to review with the board the idea of to alleviate that issue at the high school. And just give you an idea of what we were thinking about, give you some time to kind of digest that. We can further discuss it at the next board meeting. And then if anybody has any questions or concerns, so we can kind of go forward with that. But let me just briefly explain it. Right now, obviously, we have two lanes coming into the high school as you see right here. Our property starts right here at this, at this little dotted line. It might be hard to see in this picture. So essentially, we're adding a half a lane on one side and a half a lane on the other side to get that three lanes for the entrance there.
And that's similar to what we did at Wampus, if people can visualize.
We did that pickup lane at Wampus that's actually working out really well. So it's kind of the same issue. We have a lot of backup of traffic coming in. And some of the issues, obviously, emergent situation, it's very hard for a vehicle to get in there, a fire or an ambulance. But also our buses, you know, our buses can be caught back in this corner over here. And what happens is our security guard will halt traffic, you know, coming, coming out of the school. And the buses will go on the opposite lane and go down that, that opposite lane and come and line up over here. So this change, it kind of alleviates that. It gets our parents on the right side here on the far right new lane there and leaves this lane open for the buses to come in and then for, you know, students or parents or whoever is coming to our school to get actually into the parking lot during that time period. Again, obviously, the big concern is the emergency aspect of it where, you know, again, the, the security guard could stop traffic, have them come the other way, but this does help us that way. And it should help to speed, expedite the pickup also as well, which we obviously want to do. We want to get people in and out, not have any issues on the outside road as well. Again, this is budgeted for. This is something that we did budget for last year. It seems like, you know, a hundred years ago where we did this, this year's budget. But it was something we did put in the budget, so we still have those funds available. And then, yeah, so I just want to give the board, if they have any, if you have any questions. Now, we do have to make some adjustments to the current landscape of it. We have to, you know, push some light poles back and make some adjustments in terms of drainage, but nothing really significant that would, that would halt any issues. But yeah, I wanted to just kind of run it with you tonight and just give you a chance to try and digest it. And if you had any questions, reach out to me. And then at the next board meeting, we can further discuss it and and kind of go from here. This is something we would do in the summer, obviously. And we would pave this whole area as well, this area we paved because we'd need to mark new lines. We'd need to do, you know, new signs and everything that way.
If, Jen, if it's all right, I would just like to carry this to the next board meeting, just in case Lara or Scott want to weigh in on it.
Sure.
I think it's okay, so.
Kelly, this is something that has to be put on for approval, correct? Like this has to get a board vote? We did that already when we did the planning last year.
Yeah, we did it with the, in the budget process.
Okay, good. Then we'll just hold it over for next time for discussion then.
I want to hold it over for discussion. Just want to get the two board members buy-in.
Yep, I just wanted to kind of get it on the table so you guys could take a look at it before.
No, no, that, that's, that's, that's fine. Thank you.
And then just quickly, some good news. You might not remember this. It's been a long time, but we received a grant from the Dormitory Authority for a new scoreboard. That was almost a year ago. And those funds were put on hold, you know, related to COVID and the current New York State budget. But we just got some news last week that the funds have been released and we, we are approved for that, that grant for the new scoreboard. The delay kind of in the grant is going to, is not going to get the scoreboard in until probably mid-September. So at least we'll have it in for the season, maybe.
Well, when do we go scoreboard shopping?
When do, we did that already. You missed that. Yeah, that was about eight months ago. Yeah.
Yeah, we have scoreboards roll up on semis outside of our offices and project for us.
Yeah, it's, wait till you see it. It's an amazing.
We have, do you have a picture of what was chosen?
Yes, I can send it to the board. Yeah.
Please, please.
Digital scoreboard. It has a nice, on the top, it has a nice, I think it's a Bobcat logo. It says.
I hope it's a Bobcat and not a garnet.
It's a bowling ball.
Yeah, it looks, it's really nice, really nice. So.
Yeah, send the picture to us. Let's just, just, we like to see it.
Yep, well, for sure. But, you know, finally some good news, so.
Well, that is good news, but to shake those funds out, it's not easy.
That's true. Got to prove.
Okay.
Ira, I do have one more thing before you end.
Yes, go ahead.
So it is the second to last board meeting with our board member, Mike Sanders, in his seat. And we are not here to give this to you in person, Mike, but we have a medal here that says Byram Hills School District, Mike Sanders, Board of Education Trustee from 2015 to 2021. And I know that we are going to speak again about you at our last meeting and we're going to have time to celebrate you. But my secretary, Janine, just had this arrive and she made me swear that I would show it to you.
That's great.
It's really beautiful and it will be great. A great memory of your time with us. More accolades to come later, but.
Do we have to take a vote on whether or not to give this to him?
No, I, I think it's, it's just not as big as the trophy behind me, which is the same thing.
Don't be jealous, Ira.
As you say, Jen, we'll have really
You will.
Time to give Michael all the plaudits he's due, which are many. So that'll be great. So congratulate, our first congratulations, Michael, to you.
Thank you. And thank you. Thanks, Janine, for me, please.
It's really, it's a wonderful thing. Okay, any other administrative reports? Okay, President's Report. I want to note that on May eighteenth, the Byram Hills community went to the polls. And they re-elected Scott Levy and they elected Petri Varma to the Board of Education for three-year terms. And most importantly, the budget was overwhelmingly approved by a vote of three forty-four to seventy. And on behalf of the Board of Education, I want to thank the community for their really unstinting support of the work we do for the children and for the Byram Hills District. We, we value it, we need it, and you've always come through for us and we try to come through for you. So congratulations to the community, congratulations to the board and to Kelly and his team and the other administration. It was a very nice demonstration of the trust and confidence that the community has in the Board of Education. And we should always be very, very careful how we spend that. So, well, well done. And on another note, I know that sports is wrapping up and it's been a great season. I just have to say what a treat it was for me to watch the girls' softball team when they played, I think it was Chapacqua. And they, they won the game in extra innings. And they've had a fabulous season and I think only good, better times are coming. And I'm just rolling back the film to the last twenty, thirty years where girls' softball just didn't exist. And when it existed, it was difficult. And these kids are playing at a real exceptional level. So just big congratulations to the girls' softball team. The girls' lacrosse team had an outstanding season. Congratulations to them. You know, it's not easy. And all the sports teams found it, I'm sure, not easy to compete under the current and hopefully now what's going to be fading away requirements. But we're very proud of our student athletes. And my commenting on two is not meant to exclude others, but congratulations to all the athletes and coaches for their time put in. It's, I think, we, we think it's a very important part of the Byram Hills experience, if doing what we do. Okay, that said, any committee board member reports? I call the board's attention to a couple of things. The graduation will be outdoors, as we know, on June twenty-second, right here in Byram Hills, which brings me back some twenty-two, twenty-three years. I think the last time we did that. Hopefully, the weather will cooperate. I understand if not, all the freshmen will each hold an umbrella, so everybody can, can be good. But we hope for good weather. And for our purposes, on July thirteenth at seven thirty a.m., will be the Board of Education Annual Reorganization Meeting. At seven thirty a.m., please make sure you have that a.m. on your, on your calendar. Okay, any topics for future agenda or FIs at this point? Communications of the Board. We've had several emails from community members regarding the mask issue, which I believe were responded to tonight by the superintendent. May have a motion, please, to approve the Board of Education minutes of May fourth, two thousand twenty-one and May eighteen, two thousand twenty-one.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any amendments, modifications, comments, corrections to any of those set of minutes? Seeing none, all in favor, please? Okay, well, our next Board of Education meeting is June twenty-first, which will celebrate the teachers, the recognition, staff longevity. Unfortunately, again, it's a virtual meeting. It's always a wonderful event to have the teachers live, but hopefully next year we'll be, we'll be back in to do that. And we are rapidly, and that is essentially the last Byram Hills board meeting of the year. So we are coming down the back stretch. With that said, we discussed earlier on the executive session items that were handled. So may I have a motion, please, to adjourn tonight's meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right. Thank you very much. The meeting's adjourned. Good night, Byram Hills. Have a very pleasant week.
Bye, everyone.